We will go ahead and get started then. I'm calling to order the May regular board meeting for the Oak Park Public Library Board of Trustees. And will the secretary please call the rule?
Trustee Bird Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Bloom?
Here.
Oh, I was supposed to be last. I forgot.
Oh.
Shifting. Trustee Butler?
Here.
Trustee Fairfax is here. Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Wilkinson?
Here.
Trustee Yamamoto?
Here.
Trustee Bloom?
Here.
Okay, and going to receive a report from the nominating committee for the election of board officers. Christina, are you?
Yeah.
Speaking for the committee? Okay.
Uh, well, so, I mean, we have four, uh, we have four officer roles. We have that people express interest, which is amazing, right? Like, the fact that we have four new members, we have new positions. Like, I think just the fact that we have excitement over roles should be celebrated. Do you want me to share then who we have chosen? Is that what you're looking for now?
Um, yeah, I think the plan is that you would share. We'll discuss the roles as they are in the bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can, I will double check with the experts here, vote as a whole for all of them, or should we vote individually? I think previously we voted as a whole, but...
You can run a slide.
Okay. So then, at that point, if there's no discussion, then we just...
Okay. Do you want to talk about the roles then? I share the recommendations, or that sounds listed here?
Okay.
Yes, I, other, I feel like that's the bulk of the report, so...
Okay. Literally just going to read, uh, the bylaws. Um, President, the President shall preside at all meetings of the Board of Trustees, appoint committees and committee chairs, act as ex officio member of all committees, and perform such other duties as are normally associated with the office or may be assigned to him or her by the Board. Vice President, the Vice President shall, in the absence of the President, perform all duties of that office and shall have such other duties as responsibilities as the Board may determine. Uh, Secretary, the Secretary... Sorry, the Secretary shall have charge of such correspondence as is delegated by the President of the Board of Trustees. The Secretary shall be responsible for distribution, collection, and tabulation of forms used in the annual executive director's evaluation. The Secretary shall preside in the absence of both the President and the Vice President. In the event that the President, Vice President, and Secretary are absent from the meeting, the members present shall elect a President pro temp from among themselves to conduct the meeting only. Um, the village treasurer of the Village of Oak Park shall be ex officio treasurer of the Board of Library Trustees and shall post bond as required by statute. Financial Officer is the Board's chief liaison with the Executive Director to develop the budget. Any questions on the duties of officers as they currently stand?
I don't have a question, but I, um, have a comment in that we probably need to update our bylaws soon after we get past this process to...
We've been talking about that. Okay, seeing no questions, then, um, do you want to go ahead and let us know?
Yeah, okay, so, um, okay, so the slate that we are offering as a recommendation is Virginia as our President, Suzanne as Vice President, uh, Mika as Treasurer, and Colin as, I'm sorry, Colin as Finance Officer.
And Mika as...
And Mika as Secretary. Sorry about that. I had it written in the office order.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor?
I'm...
Opposed? The motion passes, and we have our new officers.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations, folks. All right. Now that we have a quorum, we have a full board, we can do an approval of the minutes from April 22nd. Uh, those are in the board packet. If you look on the, since I know the new folks, you did not get those emailed directly to you.
Um, I can, uh, motion to approve them.
Is there a second?
Oh, there's a second.
Okay. So moved by Christina, seconded by Suzanne. All in favor of accepting the meetings, meeting minutes from April 22nd? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Wonderful. All right.
Wow, I thought, I'm sorry. I thought I said, um, people find out for...
We did, but we can't do it until, we couldn't do it until we have...
Oh, I see, I see.
Until we have people. So now we will go ahead and get started with public comment. Um, we did get an email from Jenna Holtzberg and Stasia Chamel.
That's us.
All right, you guys have your three minutes. Okay.
Mistress. So good to see you. So good to see you. Oh, Valores Eve, kind serves and ladies, and all other characters. I am Mistress Alice Ford, and I am Mistress Margaret Page. Um, we are the cousins to William, William Shakespeare. You may have heard of us. We're the Merry Lives of Windsor. But, no, no worries. We will move on. Get my, get my bandage ready now.
Yes.
Oh, no, this is not the right time. Oh. This is from that greasy swine, Sir John Falstaff. This gent will never leave me, honey. Oh, no. Cut that out of here. No, it's gone, yes. Let's see what I have here on this. Oh, okay, yes, this is it. Let me see, it's like that. Yeah. Here we are, this is a correct one. We would like it to speak with thee about this spectacular library's annual Shakespeare Gala, held this year on April 27th. We were both at Yon Gala this year. And last year, 'twas such excitement and jubilation for all of the ten people present. We were puzzled as to wherefore more souls were not at this fair day of revelry and art and literature. I spoke with my own friends and neighbors about the Oak Park Public Library Shakespeare Gala. Those consools did not know it, what it was. They have, never have heard of such here at the library. It's an earnest shame. With so many of our students studying our valorous cousin William Shakespeare and his writing, wherefore were not more kind souls at this revelry. As a forty-two resident of this commune, lasting the heavy taxation of our various taxing forms, and as a public academy educator for thirty-five years, tis concerning the library could not find of a way to connect it with the commune's youths through District 97 and District 200 and maketh a multi-generational, inclusive educational revelry. Hear, 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 Mistress Page. Indeed. Our humble village is filled with creative souls. Art and performance are in the bones of this commune through caste, bravo, ovation, the Actors Garden, Madison Street Theater, and even co-equal within our local politics. Indeed, indeed. There are so many kind people in Oak Park who appreciate, appreciate it, literature and the arts of performance. We shall thus close, kind sirs and ladies, with this thought. Privy to purposefully connect with the other stakeholders in our commune, District 97 and District 200 educators wouldth loveth to partner with the library to bring of their Shakespearean students to this revelry. Other student residents need to participate in this as well. The Austin Garden Shakespeare Theater! Huzzah! Indeed! Huzzah! Well, thank it thee for thy tempest and half a valorous eve. We take our leave of thee.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I'm next, but I'm not as beautifully Shakespearean as these two, so I...
Did you sign up?
I did, I did. My name's Sarah Paris.
Oh, you were the person I was about to call.
How about?
Thank you.
Alright. Um, so, my name is Sarah Paris. I teach speech drama debate at Guan不尽 Brooks Middle School, and I love Shakespeare. Um, and I encourage all of my students to love Shakespeare as well. We study it all three years in my class. And I was unaware of the Shakespeare Festival, and I don't want that to happen again. And I spoke with these fine females, and they encouraged me to have my students come, but we didn't have enough time or planning to make that happen. So I would love to coordinate with the library. As a District 97 teacher, I would love to set up a relationship so that District 97 students who come here every single day after school can come and perform. I, I will make that happen, and I can coordinate. I will, I will be one of the people in charge of it. Um, and I would love to do that. So I am here, um, following their grand performance to just say I, I would love to volunteer myself and then all of the awesome students at Brooks and Julian, because, um, Mister Boyle also teaches Shakespeare. We're in, so we would love to set up a relationship. And I think it would, it's the time and the place to do it.
Thank you.
Okay. If we have one other person on the list, Zosha Holtzberg?
Zosha.
Zosha. My apologies.
It's fine. Um, I went to the Shakespeare Fest last month, and I just would like, um, because there were like barely any people here, and the room's so big, so it looked sad. It looked very sad. Um, and it was only me and my sister, we were the only kids. And that also made it sad. But it was still really fun, so that's why I think more people could come. Um, and, this is, yeah, I think that's basically it.
Did we have anybody else who was here for public comment not on the list?
Thank you.
Right, thank you all very much.
Thank you! Good job, ladies.
All right.
That's great.
That was the first time.
That is the first time we've had Shakespearean.
I appreciate it, love it.
Well, before we get into the trustee comments and calendar, um, aside from having our four new trustees here today, we also have our new fantastic Executive Director, Elsworth Carmen. I wanted to know, do you want to take a few minutes for the benefit of the folks at home and introduce yourself to Oak Park?
Sure, thank you. Um, I'm Elsworth Carmen. I started today as the Executive Director of Oak Park Public Library. Um, and it's, it's really great to be here. I worked with Oak Park Public Library, um, for about five years, um, nine and a half years ago as a manager. Um, and then relocated my son to Iowa, where I've been the Director of two libraries, the Marion Public Library and the Iowa City Public Library. Um, was thrilled to see the opportunity to come up, to come back to the Oak Park area, to a library that's, uh, so well-respected and such a, such a special organization. Um, and my first day has gone really well. Um, prior to being with Oak Park the first time, I worked in public libraries in New Jersey as a team services librarian, and in Washington DC as a children's and team services manager. And, um, I, I feel like I really need to call out the hospitality of the Board and the staff during the interview process. And during my first day here, it has been, um, a really exceptional show of professionalism and respect and hospitality. So, thank you, thank you for having me, and I look forward to, to, to do this, everyone here and with the community.
So good for you. So welcome.
Thank you.
You're excited to be here. All right, we'll take a quick look at the trustee comments and calendar. Um, so this Friday is the Laconai Trustee Banquet. I believe everyone has already let Lee know if they are planning to attend. Elsworth, I believe, will be attending along with us. Um...
For new folks, do we want to share kind of what that is? Like, what, what Laconai is and what happens at the banquet?
Um, so I've actually never attended. Um, but Laconai is a kind of local library organization of, uh, Chicago-area libraries, and they really focus on things like staff training, networking. Um, so I know the, the trustee banquet has been going on for quite a few years. Um, so they're super excited about this one. And yes, everyone who, um, wanted to attend has signed up.
Yeah, it's, um, I think, last year was, I think, the first year I went, but it's, um, banquet, lots of talking, learning a lot from other trustees from around the area. Not a huge pressure situation, a lot of fun, so...
Dancing?
Uh, I mean, we could make it happen, but I don't think there's any plan.
So there must be something...
Dancing. Thank you. You know, you have to get our accolades in somehow. Um, June 1st, elected officials breakfast. That'll be from, well, it starts at 9:30, and then Day in Our Village will be 11 to 4 out in Skogel Park. Um, again, not a high-pressure situation. Come up, hang out in the veterans' room, meet some of the other folks who are on the other taxing bodies, talk a little bit about what you want to do, what they want to do, whatever he's planning to do, whatever you're panicking about. It's a good time to talk to other local elected officials on where they see, I don't know, what they see in the community. Nothing too formal, but it's a nice time to get together and talk to folks before there's actual stuff to talk about.
I think we've handled it perfectly for Elsworth's part. Like, this is like, this is like, look, there's your welcoming party and all the people in one place.
Yeah.
Make it easy for you.
Thank you. Something like hitting the ground running.
But then you don't have to seek them out.
No.
And then, and actually, also, I wanted to say, if you would like any help kind of meeting people, you know, from the different, um, governing bodies. Um, Christina and I have been serving on IGOV, so we know the, um, elected officials, um, and then staff, well, the, the leadership in the staff positions and, you know, help with introductions. So hopefully it will actually be beneficial and not like, trail by fire.
No, thank you.
Did we hear anything late on July 4th? Yeah.
I do not believe there is going to be a parade.
Okay.
Or we will not be in the parade, if there is a parade.
Okay, um...
Oh, do we need any coverage for Day in Our Village, or no?
Um, I can ask Judy when she's back in the office.
Because I think in the past, we, like, with, like, with trustees, we've helped staff the booths and kind of figure out who's going to be in which hours. Okay, how long is it?
Eleven to four.
So...
Five hours.
Yeah. So, since we have five people doing hour.
And then, did we say last time that for 4th of July, the Friends might still be marching in the 4th of July parade, it's just not the staff?
I think so.
Okay. Um, we'll talk about that, that's under item 11, for us to talk about where we want, um...
So, Judy, right, because you have, do we know?
I do not know, I don't think so.
That was the best. It was, we all like...
I know. I think the village is doing something on the South Lawn.
Yeah.
I liked the parade, but I liked when we, we marched in that, because we'd go through town and everybody's just like loving the library. You know, it's just, yeah, we love the library!
Highly recommend if, if you're able to on July 4th, if, if the Friends will invite us to march along with them, that, that you guys go, it's a, it's a good time.
Sounds good.
And then, book sale, Friends of the Library Book Sale will be July 11th through the 13th. Um, we're having this in-house again this year, right, Lee?
Mm-hmm.
Um, anything we should know?
Um, everything's planned, they're all ready to go. It's a really successful event. Um, really brings out the community, so it should be a great year.
Are you taking donations now, or no?
Um, donations start, I believe, on May 31st. And you can, uh, drop them off in the building. Uh, you can use the book bin outside, or, um, there will be times and dates where you can actually drive and drop them off at the library garage opening.
Yeah. Perfect.
And I think one year, we had, um, the Board had a booth at the farmer's market, and it happened, I don't know if it was planned that way or coincidentally on the same day. And so, when people would come up to us, we would send them down the street to the book sale. So, that's something to think about if we're, if we're considering having a, um, having a table at, uh, the farmer's market.
All right, that gets us through July. And then I think we're going to talk... Yeah, we may be missing an item. Nope, it's on the back, just kidding. Okay. Mister Carmen, do you have an executive report? Or Lee, do you have one?
Out here on day one.
Um, so, uh...
I have a few comments.
Okay.
Again, I just want to reiterate, um, how great it is to be here and how welcoming the staff and stakeholders have been. Um, I think that having a new director and a member of new trustees at the same time really gives, um, a unique opportunity to, to come together around the, the values initiatives that anchor us all to the library, and specifically about inclusivity and DEI work, um, and, and maintaining our status and growing as a anti-racist organization. Um, so I, I really feel like that's something that we can leverage as we get to know each other and learn. Um, and as we get more familiar with work styles and individual skill sets, I think one of my roles as a director is to listen for places that we could do shared training and shared learning opportunities to really, um, really position us all to be the very best that can be. So that's one of the things that I will be, I'll be watching for, um, is whether that's, um, learning more about our rules as a group or thinking about those bigger inclusivity and DEI initiatives. Um, I'm, I'm really excited to, to find places that we can grow and gel as a team. And I want to put out there to, to please don't hesitate if you have questions or needs or want to check in. A meeting once a month is great, but those four weeks can feel long, and our dedication does not get to be limited to just those two days. So, um, I'm really open to questions, feedback, comments I've had in time. And, thank you. Your traditional, I anticipate in coming months to have, um, have a more, um, typical update and report for the Executive Director role, but we will carry that tonight.
Um, so April was a very busy month. Um, so we did send out the strategic priorities report, um, along with the additions and terminations report and staff changes report. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Is that on the board?
It is.
And so, like, are new members only just seeing this number? So you want to just...
It was posted, yeah.
It was posted, yeah. It's posted.
Okay.
How have we been doing finding someone to ride the bike?
Uh, we just hired two, um, bike interns.
Okay.
Is it easier now that it's electric, like, to get people?
Um...
Or you're still using both, so...
I think we're still using, like, staff, and, um, the interns will do, um, quite a bit of work. Um, I think there's just hesitancy about, like, riding the bike, um, the street in Oak Park.
Uh, yeah.
I can't imagine why.
Yeah. But it's, it's well-loved, and, um, we try to be at, you know, as many places as we can be with the bike, the community, love that.
I was thrilled to actually get it for our block party. I was like on it so fast.
Yes, we had it for our block party.
Last year I did not get it. But I just, I, I learned, and you have to request the minute you get the date. So, I'm excited. And I also love the fact that the, the book bike, that they offer, like, research. Um, I have no notice that you can get them to, to research history of your neighborhood.
Oh.
Um, that's one of the options. Or to sit down and, like, read to kids, or, like, there's just a whole list of options of ways to engage. It's really great. So, pretty excited to be in that season. But I understand my concerns about our streets, and streets in general right now.
I guess I would just, like, echo with the, um, you can't echo them because they're like Shakespearean, but, you know, but folks, did public comment? Like, I think, uh, what was your interpretation about of them? And like, what might, because I see you all highlighted it, and I probably wouldn't have asked about it if it hadn't come up in public comment, but since it did, is there any thing you want to share?
Um, you know, I, um, I don't, I don't think we've been doing the, the program long, and I'm, um, I know the staff, uh, who, who did the program. You know, library programs, um, you know, we market ourselves a lot better than we used to, so we try to get the information out as many ways as possible. Um, but that was really great feedback that I feel like we can take back to staff, um, to really work with. Um, we have both a middle school and high school librarian, and maybe just kind of collaborating with them to get out into the schools and, um, get the word out. Um, but yeah, that, that was a first, and that was delightful.
And what a treat that y'all had Michael, too.
Ah, yeah, that is, that was just amazing. Um, he's an amazing person, and that we were able to, to get him, um, you know, to do a program for us is, is a big deal. And, you know, especially in this time where libraries are facing so much. Like, hearing from someone who just really celebrates libraries and communities and library staff, um, was really, really wonderful.
Um, as a frequent patron of the May's Ranch, it's lovely to see this update about Carolyn's retirement. Yeah, she's been a figure and force there for, for a long time, so that is really lovely spot, right?
Yes, we, we will definitely... Yes, we, we will definitely miss her, but, um, hope to see her as she uses the Mayes Ranch. Yeah, I mean, I think she was the first, one of the first people that I met when I started here, like, 22 years ago. Yeah, so she's an institution and we love her.
Is there anything else specifically that you wanted to call up from the strategic priorities?
Um, you know, we're, we're, um, the multicultural, um, festival was, um, wonderful. There was a lot of collaboration between different, um, library departments. Um, we got some wonderful feedback, both, um, on programming and collections, um, so I'll highlight that. Um, and just, uh, National Library Week, we just had a wonderful week celebrating staff and, and libraries in general, and, um, I think it really invigorated us, um, you know, especially with, um, ALA and their show up for our libraries campaign and what's going on with IMLS, um, so it was really meaningful this month.
All right, does anybody have any questions on strategic priorities, the additions and terminations, staff changes? All right, we will take a look at the financial reports. They start on this page 15 of 60. So Lee, I feel like we read somewhere that tax money is going to be delayed this year.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask him about that too.
Okay.
Um, Jiu-Jiu, I think it was a, a, just a technology glitch. Um, but Billy and, um, Linda, the manager of finance, um, were aware of this and, um, you know, put things in place, so we should be good.
Okay.
You know, I have a question about this, just in, not in substance, but on format. You know, we have, we have the description and then we have the distribution report. It's still in a PDF. Is there a way we can get that in Excel so we can more quickly see where the distribution, like, to organize it and see where things are? I was just, as I was sort of looking through it to see what things are alphabetical by vendors, sometimes not the way I wanna see it, so.
I can pass that along, um, to Billy, the director.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's possible.
Yeah.
When they would print out the Excel, it would be like, like, one of those really extensive ones.
Yeah, but not for printing out, but for looking at, online and trying to see what's what and what came from what. It was just, it's easier than flipping back and trying to find them in PDF.
Yeah, that's true.
Can I ask a question? Um, this is exciting about the grant, um, that Latonya Jackson will be able to get. Uh, can you say a little bit more about what the plan is for programming extension?
Um, so that is going toward a mentorship program, um, that Latonya has created. Um, it's very well-attended, um, and she's just been doing, um, fantastic things with, um, the youth that come into the library. They really feel like it's their space, and so she's really championed, uh, that mentorship program, um, and the students really get a lot out of it.
So it really, will it be for, like, new programming aspects or just to sustain?
Sustain.
Yeah, that's great. Congratulations.
I will pass on.
I don't see it in here, but I remember you guys sent out, like, a call to action, I think, emails on, um, I'm, um, on combating what's going on, I think. Um, and maybe I'm just sitting here, but, um, do you wanna talk to any about that or was that last month, last last month?
Um, yes, so, uh, if you go on the ALA website, um, you'll find the campaign information. Um, basically, ALA is really directing people to contact their representatives and senators. Um, it seems like with all of the, um, the legal cases, um, states are getting money in 2025, but, um, IMLS has no money in the budget for 2026 that goes to Congress. And so they're really trying to get people, um, to get out and, and really start contacting their elected officials about this. Um, you know, I can say for us, we, we do not operate on IMLS money, but IMLS does fund state libraries as well as consortiums, so it does eventually trickle down to every public library. And there are smaller libraries that this will really decrease the amount of money they have for operating. So it's really important to get, get the voices out there, like, the library profession is, like, we're charged, we're ready to do it, but I think they're just asking also community members who love libraries to get involved.
Yeah, is the, the board's made a statement?
We have not made a statement.
I think that would, that would be a good idea.
We did.
I think we did.
Oh, we gave a statement.
Yeah.
No, we haven't given a recent one since they were stated.
We just did the one about ILA, that's what, like, the message.
But not the additional.
No, but I think wasn't, like, an update from communications that y'all were gonna have, like, a call to action? I think that's what you're referring to, Colin.
I think so, um.
I think Jody sent an email about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, yeah. But do you think the board should make a statement beyond what we, what we did already?
Beyond what was done?
Yeah, to support, you know, um.
To support the call to action?
Yeah.
That's up to us to decide.
No, I'm just asking all of you, do you think it's worth it? Do you think it's, should we do it?
I think so. I just, I think we have to coordinate really closely with Jody and make sure that the language we're using is the same as what the library is using.
Yeah.
Um, is that something that we want to put on our list of things to review or look at for June? Or do we feel like that needs to go more quickly? And who do we want to hold responsibility for at least the initial draft? Because I will say collaborative drafting in a Google Doc while adhering to OMA is a problem. So it would likely be better for one person to write out the outline or the bare bones of it, have all of us take a look, and then have somebody sit down with Jody and make sure that all of the language adheres to what we would send out from the library as well.
I would probably be taking the statement that we made before with whatever language the staff has done since then.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of trying to, to work the two together.
Yeah.
I think if, I think if, uh, it's connected to something that's time-bound, like the APA campaign that has dates involved, then we can kind of try to coordinate. Otherwise, I, I don't think it's necessarily urgent. It's like an ongoing issue, so I, I don't, I don't see rush, the reason to rush it then, um, unless there's, like, it's attached to, like, a particular, like, is that APA, um, campaign, does it have, like, a particular timeframe? Are they, like, trying to reach legislators before they go to session, like, that kind of thing?
Um, I believe, like, they're telling people do it now, um, because the, the budget, the 2026 budget has already, like, started going through Congress.
Okay, if somebody is urgent, more, yeah.
So someone on the team thinks they're the best to do it, communications on it, or?
I would be happy to meet with Jody, um, and we can have up to two of us, so maybe Mika and I could meet with Jody. So outgoing secretary and, and secretary.
You're a librarian.
I'm a librarian.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're not, you're not even?
I would be happy to coordinate with you and Jody on that.
Okay.
I was just thinking secretary, secretary, it's where my head went.
And Mika and Megan sound alike, so.
They do. I almost corrected when you were getting sworn in.
Don't you call me Megan?
Oh, she'll handle it. She's used to us.
All right, so Nina, Suzanne, you guys are going to coordinate on an initial draft, and?
I think we should probably, um, touch base with Jody. Um, Jody's out and will be back next week.
Uh, actually, I think. Yeah, she will be back next week.
Okay, so maybe we, if we have a way of getting on her calendar before she's back, or do we need to wait until she's back?
Um, I think you can send her an email now.
Well, I don't wanna bother everyone when she's not here. I just didn't know there was somebody who puts that away.
I don't think so. Nothing about talking to Jody.
We, we have access to her calendar, but, um, maybe we find a, a possible time and, like, when she gets back, we can talk.
Just guessing that our time is more limited than hers because we have other jobs.
Do we wanna narrow, oh, sorry, do we wanna narrow the scope of what we're talking about in the announcement? Is it everything, all the things related to libraries? Or are we focusing in on?
Columns that you've suggested, or any?
Uh, I did, but, I mean, I'm open to any, any, I, I feel like both of you, since you're making the draft, should make that decision.
Okay. There's no specific, particular either.
It sounded like it was a call to action.
I think it's a call, yes, exactly. It should be more, I think, more honed in, right, to, to the call to action.
There's a lot of information on the ALA website.
Mm-hmm.
They're asking, um, so just if you could show up, it's at ala.org backslash advocacy backslash show up. Um, they're asking people to call members of Congress and members of Congress, you know, for, with multiple channels of communication, um, as well as spreading the word on social media, um, telling other people to take action, um, sharing their library store, which the library did, um, so if those could be components, perhaps, it's a call to action.
And then Christina, we could go through to you and I go to try and, like, get the information.
Yeah, that was what I was thinking, but then I was just like, all of these bodies have, like, similar actions because they're all dealing with crumbling infrastructure, um, from national.
What sort of way to combine them in communications and community? Like, here's, like, all the actions from all of our governing bodies.
Yeah, yeah.
With, in response to what's going on, and then people.
I could share. I, we're definitely in, like, the, the in-between time, so I can share it. I definitely will.
I mean, let's, not, not to, like, make ourselves the example, but let's put something together. Let's see if we can make it something that's replicable, so that when the next thing happens, we're just, we're plug and play, ready to put in, you know, the synopsis of what's going on, why everybody here should care about it, and what the call of action is, and then see if we can offer that to the other governing bodies as well.
That sounds good. Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, Parkers is probably dealing with the same, I mean, the township, and, yeah, that will, we can come to their workshop.
I think if we can make it as easy as possible, like, as light and light as possible, as soon as we can.
Can ALA has done that for us, and it's a one-click, it's a one-click situation, so we can just use the, we can use the format that they've done. Talk to Jody to make sure it sounds the same. It's not gonna be, we're not recreating the wheel. Really, it's on heavy lifting.
I think the most important part is, sort of what Lee brought up, that as, as Oak Parkers, we sometimes feel like we're insulated from national financial fallout, because we, we do get most of our money from local taxes, but we're, we're not gonna be isolated. When services are lost elsewhere, folks are gonna show up at our door. And what are we planning to do? How are we planning to preserve as much of their access where they have it already in their own home communities? Um, I think finding a call to action and putting it out there, making it easy for everyone is probably, yeah.
I think also helping.
That's what I go.
Understand, um, how, even though we don't, like, we're majority local tax-supported, how we can still be impacted by it because of ALA and ILA and all of the other, you know, and SWAN, and all the other support. You know, I was having a conversation with a neighbor, um, recently about that, and we were like, how, you know, how do those support that? Um, so I think kind of boiling it down to help people understand, um, how it's going to impact us, even though we're not at an immediate risk, you know, given that we have the, the tax rates. Because, you know, especially if people are feeling like, I pay a lot of taxes, so why are we at risk? I have a greater ability to understand that.
Um, I'm also seeing that the ALA had a guide for how to conduct a comprehensive library tour with a congressperson or local legislator, state legislator, to raise the profile of libraries and build, educate and build awareness and, um, support for libraries and elected officials. So that's also something we could potentially, uh, consider. It'd be this amazing two-page guide.
Or, um, they need to be, like, congresspeople, not, uh, like, state reps.
It could be either.
Could be either.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, there's.
We, I think focus right now on, on.
Yeah, let's do, yeah.
Yeah, like, national, um, level, who are deciding, you know, national level budget, but I think that, you know, it's important for state legislators as well.
Yeah, I wonder if DPO wants to be involved a little, you know?
It's very.
Yeah.
That would give an opportunity to, to articulate, sort of what that trickle-down looks like. So if some libraries are more impacted than others, immediately, what does that mean for, like, the ecosystem of libraries? Because I think it's easy to think of just one budget, but when you think about ILL and material sharing and under-resourced, um, collaboration, um, we can't expect non-librarian people to automatically understand that. But if you can start taking individuals, see that picture, then that can spread from there. So I, I love the idea of.
All right, um, Megan and Suzanne, is there a day where you want me to check in on where we are? Or when is Jody back?
Uh, next week.
So you get to the weekend day?
Actually, I mean, she's here for Day in Our Village. I mean, so she, she'll be here for Day in Our Village, so Sunday.
Here we go. Yeah.
But. What do you think?
I mean, you want to just, you want to check in mid-week, and what do you, what do you think? Under the week, what do you, what do you want to do?
Um, yeah, we can touch base with Virginia and Diana next week.
Yeah, I'm not wrong on finding.
All right, I know that was a little bit of a detour. Um, financial reports, do we have a motion to? I completely forgot how words work.
Could I ask a quick question about the other part real quick, about terminations? Is it, uh, does termination also mean, like, if you've left the company?
Off, then enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it.
Retired.
Yes, retired.
All, all reasons a person might leave, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have a motion to adopt or approve the financial, oh, sorry, the resolutions and disbursements? No motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. And then motion passes for the financial reports, additional reports, do we have a report from IGO?
Um, yeah, just a brief one. We did it, I mean, actually, just a week ago, I will say, and, um, we're kind of in that time where it's between committees, I'd say, because, like, we haven't gotten any folks in yet. Um, and a lot of other people didn't show up because I think that they didn't see reelection and whatnot, so, um, it was a small group, but I'll share with you all that I, I threw my hat in the ring of IGO's chair, so I meant to share this earlier, but that's one of the reasons I wasn't interested in any of the board officer roles. I just, um, I hope to make IGO something. I hope to bring some organization to it, and I hope to, I, I just think there's so much opportunity, and I'm really excited to try, um, some, some thinking and some partnering with it and make it happen. So I have put my name in, so far nobody else has, so we'll see. Um, now I think that's the only update for right now.
And IGO, I think, in the last, so I was a rep for IGO, there's two reps for IGO from the, the library board, and I was a rep, um, before that, Matt was, and some other folks were, and, um, and then Christina joined. And there was a big changeover in who had been kind of running IGO from before. And, um, so we saw all these amazing opportunities, but the organization piece was missing. And Christina kept. but the organization piece was missing, and Christina kept leading that effort.
Well, thank you.
And doing really great work to, to try and get us there, and, um, so I'm really excited about the idea of Christina taking over IGOV and really, really bringing about what it can be, because it really has such amazing opportunities, you know, where we all connect with the different governing bodies, and it just was kind of.
Yeah, there were so many, there were so many things we like started and stopped to that I still think would be so good, so like, one of the things we'll jump into, I'm sure, in the next few months, is like a document that helps people just understand what running entails and what joining a board entails, so you're not maybe doing it with only the information you hear, but like, also things like getting the information out, like childcare costs can be covered from campaign, right, the campaign funds raised, like those kinds of things that like, I don't think most people would know unless they really look at state statutes, so, um, kind of making that more digestible and more accessible to people is a goal of mine, so.
And, and also to make it so that there aren't 10,000 different forums, and have five people at each one, as you all experienced.
Yeah. And it's like, what the community wants or needs, or are we just guessing?
Right.
Providing, yeah, I, I think, yeah, so it's like, I think we, this last two years has been really incredible, like, relationships have been building, we've been learning some things, like there was talk on our board a couple of years ago of seeking, um, state law changing for, just going from an uncompensated board to like the possibility of not being uncompensated, changing state law in that way, um, and like that was brought up to IGOV, and all the other unpaid boards were like, that, we would love to like collaborate and like think about how school boards could work in that, or whatever, because it is so much work. Um, and it is a, a barrier to entry, I think, for a lot of people interested in joining a board, um, so it's like, things like that, like state law changes and advocacy and aligning, um, that I, I would more so like to see than just forums, so.
And we had a couple of meetings that were really promising.
Yeah.
And really engaging, which had been a big change on IGOV, and I, um, I will not be a rep for IGOV going forward, Christina, you work still well, so whoever is interested, express your interest to Virginia.
Did I say, when, when do they usually meet, it's, is it the, like the third?
It's, it's kind of been different the last few times, but I mean, I'll check, I think it's already on the.
Well, like I said, there's just been such progress from when I started, um, and, uh, I think there's real potential on what I would go, you know? So I think, you know, being another rep on that would be really, and, and even when it wasn't great, it was still interesting to learn about the other.
Yeah, we always do like around the table, so that you're just like more tapped in to what is happening in other boards, um, and that was really helpful, and like a lot of the challenges that we face as a board, a lot of other boards have also faced, um, I want to say it's the June, I don't see the June date, I don't know.
First, it's Saturday, March 8th, 30, by the way.
Yeah, but it's usually.
Dislocation, um, that I, uh, it's usually the first Saturday?
No, is it, I, I mean, that's, they've changed it so much, the last one was on the eight, it was on the 19th, no, gave a reschedule, that was the one that got canceled, that's, I don't know, we've moved it a lot recently, so I don't think we have a second.
I believe it was the second Saturday. We'll have to find out, but if anybody's interested.
Do you guys en- engage the local, um, state officials, or is there like a bill or something that you're creating?
Sometimes, like it has happened, I think, like, didn't we have, am I making this up, didn't we have an elected person come?
We did.
Like looking for it, or someone?
We did.
I think we did at some point, um, so it's kind of, it's based on what the group wants and all that, um, I think it's hard to get momentum, the group changes, there's two reps from every board, so stuff like, some people stagger it, where one person will go one month, and so I think it's one of those things that like, they're never, it, it's just hard to maintain that momentum, so I'm hoping to try this, if I get to be chair, we'll see.
To maintain the momentum, but also be current and.
Right, there's like always new issues that are opening up.
Inclusive. All the things that, that were missing.
Yeah.
You know, that were, it, it had become kind of rote, um, and not terribly inclusive, and then that shifted, but now like it seems to get better.
And that's, I think that's hard though, too, it's like, we have different frames of thinking, we have different perspectives, we have different values, um, often, and so it's a very, like, you know, it's not just the Board of Library folks, it's the Board of all types, so it's, it's an interesting group, we have no voting power, we have no actual authority, so it really is just about collaboration and alignment, um, and responding to the community needs. But I do think it's a great opportunity, so I'll keep you updated. Probably a different meaning, it's usually just like mutually decided upon, last time someone had to, it was like.
That's why it's strong teeth to get to.
Like, people don't have it, usually, um, but I, I also like see it as a, hmm, sometimes I think when, when, um, I don't know how to say it, like, it just, I think when there's not a clear, like, desire to be it, then that also shows to the people who show up, and, and so that, I want to be it, I want to be it, I will show, I will be prepared, that's all I'll say.
Uh, do we have anyone from COG, I don't believe we do anymore.
It's you, it's gonna be you?
Oh, it's.
It's always good.
It's generally the president, or the president.
Okay, I should figure out when that ends.
No.
I apologize, I'm not familiar with that long, could you describe it?
CAG, I don't know.
CAG is a council government, government, um, I feel like it's, it's similar to IGOV, but it's more
Has teeth.
Run by the village, so the village sort of is, I don't want to say like the chair, but they sort of run the agenda, decide what's going to be discussed, what's going to be talked about, and like Suzanne said, it's a little bit more teeth behind it, if there is something that's agreed upon across all of the governing bodies.
So what's the difference, I mean, they're slightly different, but could you talk a little bit about like the value of the, the, the two different bodies here, the Council of Governments and the Intergovernmental Committee, how, how they.
We don't, so Matt was the one doing council, the COG, and he's not here, yeah, so, um.
They only met every other month?
And is it beyond Oak Park, or is it just Oak Park?
I feel like maybe it was Oak Park again.
The short answer is we don't.
Okay. Um, I also think it's, it's primarily the chairs of each body, where IGOV is much more, like Christina said.
It's more like a worker.
Who, who wants to be there.
Yeah, and CAG is, I, I always got the impression from this report out, so that it was more like a report out, like, whereas IGOV is supposed to be a worker, I think, that's how I took it.
That's prob, that's.
I would like it like that.
That sounds right, I feel like with COG, it was very much like an update of who is doing what, what is everybody focused on, where is everybody, where are everybody's efforts? But less around the collaborative efforts.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, let me know if you need help on the, um, advocacy, on the per diem, is that what you're looking for?
I would love to revisit that one day, I just feel like there's so many issues, and that is probably not the one that is like the biggest right now, um, but it is a barrier to entry for folks running, so.
That's a.
Childcare, that's the main thing, I could do that.
Yeah, and that's where the conversation started, was it was around childcare costs, and then it turned into like, what about elder care, what about folks who don't have kids but still are giving up work, what if they're contractors and they're billable hours, like, there's so many reasons. So, yeah, I think it's just.
Without it, it's a burden to burden on people who need to get childcare.
Yeah.
Um, and that's just not right.
No.
And there's an over-representation of like wealthy retirees that have time and resources to participate, and, so yeah, I think it's a good idea. But it is just like priorities, so much.
For later day, yeah.
It was, you know, that was all before.
Yeah, yeah, there's too much going on right now.
Before the now time.
Yes. We're speaking very vaguely about it all.
I think that might be seen as kind of not the best thing to pursue right now.
No.
Planet Green, I know we don't have our board representative, but do you feel like this is something Matt would be able to give us some updates or info on until we have somebody from the board who can accompany him?
Staff, no.
I think so.
Okay.
Wasn't that on staff?
Okay, thanks. And.
Sorry.
And he's over operations, so he's.
Yeah.
Planet Green is about sustainability, um, of the initiative, so.
And Ted initiated us being, having a rep on that, we now have a staff member who does environmental sustainability, whose name is completely.
Uh, Christine Brubaker, thank you.
So then, um.
Friends?
Yeah, my, my hope is, well, yeah, Friends is, is next up, my hope is that you all will let me know who, I know looking at calendars right now is completely impossible to figure out if you can commit to one of these, my hope is by June, we will have all of these squared away, and I would rather have more people go than fewer, that way, you know, if somebody can't go, we, we have somebody there.
So you want more?
Uh, it would, it would be nice, just because life happens, and, and if nobody can go, we end up not getting an update or not being part of whatever happened, so if, if two people can go, um, not three, because I may, but two people can go, that would be fantastic.
To each one, the.
If possible, um, I don't know that we need two for Planet Green, since we have somebody on staff, potentially two people from staff who would be involved, but I, I do think it would still be good to have a board member, so that we could get updates.
I've also been wondering if you wanted to add to that, um, and maybe it's not, but, but, um, a liaison to Ovaga, which will soon be named Out with Purpose, uh, a part area lesbian.
Yeah, the name, yes, right?
Yeah. Took a while.
Yes, finally, finally, we'll have that name changed, um, so, um, I think it'd be nice to have a liaison to that, um, I would be willing to, um, be one of those, um, provided it's not 8:30 on a Saturday morning, um, but I don't think it would be.
I love discussing that, that on any table.
I would do it, have it formally for the last 54 years, I'd be willing to.
Right, like, I remember we had this talk a few months ago of like, how do we set these, and, because there are other tables, and like, what about them? Like, what if we want to be on them, and it kind of was, it, the conversation died, but like, in addition to Ovaga, or Out, God?
Out with Purpose.
Out with Purpose, next, um, I'd love to join the early, um, childhood.
Uh, we used to have somebody.
I know, and that was the reason for saying that the board person didn't have to attend, is that they have staff that do attend, but, I don't know, it's my day job too, so I just, I could do it, but I don't have to.
I know, this is more in the new business, I guess, but for bylaws, do we want to like codify that, in other boards that I'm on, like, instead of saying two, two, one, two, like, that people have to make, every board member makes a commitment to be at least on one, so somebody's not getting stacked up.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know which, basically, like in the bylaws, change them that, like, these are the committees, and, you know, you need to be on a A committee, or a B committee, or whatever, the way you, you want to structure it, just to make sure the, the workload is being evenly distributed.
In terms of what he is on to, about to.
To these, yeah.
Yeah. Let's, let's see who can do what first, because I, the last thing I, I'm thinking of, like, the board in two years, do we want to sign them up and mandate them to do something that maybe they're not able to do?
It's fair.
In theory, I agree with you, I would like it to be spread out humanly, but.
We could write a sentence that says, you know, unless extend, you know, so free.
Endeavor.
Free the tide, you know, extend the ways, or circumstances, or whatever.
It's also just some of them like require lots of you, I'll say, like, I, I think, like, I've been on Friends, I've been on IGOV, IGOV felt a lot more like, because Friends was, like, they're doing the work, so you're supporting them, but like, for the most part, you're the liaison between the board and the Friends, so like, you're not hands-on as much, IGOV it is hands-on, um, Planet Green, I, I don't know about, and CAG I don't know about, but like, so I think like there, there's different meeting frequency, there's different like, for, not requirements, but just like workloads.
Yeah, there's different levels of effort for.
And, and seasons too, of like, when it might be busier, like with the Friends, they probably would want support with the book drive and all that, so.
And this may not be, I now have two, three, four, five, that's like six groups here, but this may not be the extent of the list, because we did ask staff if there was anywhere that they wanted us to be, so, they may come back with other suggestions of places that they would like us to either accom- accompany them, or provide more representation from the library. Lee, did we get any?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Is there a way we can ask the community where then they would like to have contact from the board?
Okay.
A simple way.
I'm trying to think of like.
Without a giant survey.
I almost feel like we're, like, we aren't the people, like, it should go with other library communications.
What about that being a question for, um, Dan, I know it's very soon, but maybe just have, um, you know, maybe Jody team can put together just a simple, or like, you know, asking something that's a stand-up at the, at the booth or something, where would you like to see participation from the library board?
I'd like the Dana Village.
Yes, what did I say?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
Such a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we don't limit it to the board, maybe we just say the library.
The board, yeah, yeah.
And then we let staff decide if it's us, is it them, is it all of the above, because we might get more responses that way.
That's a good idea. You know, I don't know whether that's a, you know, by the thing, or Dropbox, or we often figure that out, but, it just might be nice to have there, in a community, but.
Um, last group that we did not discuss, Christina briefly discussed, is Friends, um, Friends is a separate organization, they do a lot of really great work to help us fundraise, which, as we've just talked about, the money not going where we otherwise would have predicted it go, this might become a little bit more of an important source of reserves or income for us in, in the interim. They're, we already talked about the, the book fair coming up, um, but I think we have traditionally had two board members that liaise with the Friends group, um, again, just because life happens, and then at least one person can go, so, another thing for everyone to, to think about, so that would be.
I didn't really have an update, because it was my, uh, right.
We only have one, I was gonna say, too, I think it's because it was just hard to get us to, I, that was the other, like, I think we, kind of, if you were a board officer, then pressure is off of you for the other ones, unless you really wanted it, um, that's how I remember it, but yeah.
That was a little trip, yeah. Um, so we've got IGOV, COG, Planet Green, Friends, Out with Purpose, and Collaboration for Early Childhood. I will try to put these all into an email, along with any of my other notes from today, we'll send it to you all first to see if there are any additional notes that we need to add, and then anyone who's interested can reply back, and then hopefully we'll get something organized by June.
Yes, that sounds like a great process, um, one thing that may be important is to know what they need, because then I, I can know if I can do it or not.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be on me to figure. It's gonna be a lot of me blindly emailing people, saying, hello, you have no idea who I am, but can you tell me when you need that?
And some of the new things like Out with Purpose, Ovaga, you know, that would, like, that hasn't been formalized.
Yeah.
You know, in the last few years, I've just been going to Polacks or going to other meetings, you know, um,
So maybe that could continue.
Kind of opening avenues, and that's how, you know, that's part of how we end up getting an award from them for the work that we're doing, um, just kind of building those, um, relationships, and I just realized, you know, I was saying, I'd be happy to, but that's because I've usually been the only one, so, or no, me and Ted, um, but, uh, we have a plethora of options now.
Lots of representation now.
For liaison to that, so that's fabulous, so I don't need to be the one, y'all want to. But I'd be happy, I'd be happy to like make whatever connections I've already made, but I'm happy to have that, uh, that wealth of opportunity there.
As long as you just get default invited to that, right then. That's why we're not consulting you right now.
You cannot, Matt, can I?
I'd like to do some crowdfunding around our deals, and then that will give staff an opportunity to do kind of an overlay with strategic planning initiatives. And for the community with a wealth of opportunities for involvement. And I wouldn't want it to become a bigger barrier for participation on the library board and things like that. So I think that we would, might be able to, to take that back in and again, some work around what? How does that fit into organizational goals? And then that could inform this group in terms of making decisions about where you wanna put those resources.
I think that's a really insightful, I ended up thinking, maybe even, we might have like some informal system of sort of like, this is an A priority, which is a B, and this is like, nice if we have it. So we can kind of try to.
Know what's right as priority for the staff versus.
But I do think that the relationship with Friends is important. And we don't have an update from that meeting because it was mine, which is not here. Did Suzie or who are you?
I did not. Um, Suzie is the staff liaison, but while she's out, Jody is, and I don't know if Jody was actually at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. But I, I think that, just from our last few years, I thought that would just like, say that from a board perspective, I think that's an important relationship to nurture.
I think, I think that makes perfect sense, and I was not implying that the current.
Oh, no, no, I, I'm just, to your, to your point, that's a really good. It's a really good question, a way to approach it, and I just thought, while we're talking about it, I would just say that that's one that's, from the board perspective, I think is, um, is definitely one to kind of, um, to work with.
I agree, thank you.
I feel like too, I don't think this is gonna happen, but if three people wanted to be on a committee or something, that, you know, the people who are just selected, the officers probably shouldn't be prioritized. I don't know how you guys are gonna do it, I don't even think it matters.
If, if three people.
Cause I'd hate three people. Yeah, yeah, it was just like everyone else goes first and then, you know, if you're an officer, you go, anyway, I don't think it matters.
If we are so lucky.
Yeah, we have six committees now.
Yeah, six committees, seven people.
Times two is a twelve, yes.
Um, I'm not a mathematician.
I think we're, I think, yeah. Never mind, I think we're good. I'm gonna make these bylaws like five hundred pages.
Oh, I think we need to.
I like holes.
All right, so I, I will make that my takeaway, um, getting a little bit more information on the groups that are in our additional reports.
Thank you.
When they meet, possibly if I'm feeling really motivated, like a synopsis and/or links for you guys to look and see a little bit more.
Don't, don't promise too many.
I, I should be right, nevermind. And then, like I said, we'll, we'll try to get some responses back on it by June, so that. Everything kind of lays low during the summer, so that'll give us a minute to get people to show up, make sure it really does work with everybody's schedule, and then start getting some reports out. Uh, we have no unfinished business, we do have some new business, so I will turn it over to other family for the resolution and name thing and investment signers. Do you just need those folks to hang out afterwards to sign?
Yeah, we've got the forms here.
Okay. Colin, I think that's you and me.
Yeah.
Okay. Board liaison appointments, I know we have that as an action item today, but I think we all just decided that's going to be. We all need some more information, and then we'll make that an action item for.
And then a quick question, would that be you? The president's role is to, to appoint people on committees, right? So will you decide or will you like sort of discuss and mutually kind of decide or?
I mean, technically, I guess I decide, but more, I'm going to wait for you all to tell me what you would like to do, and then I will try to work to fill in the holes from there if we don't have somebody. I'm not anticipating that we're gonna have seven people who wanna do one thing and nobody who wants to do another. I think all of our talents and all of our interests are varied enough. We'll get somebody that's interested in all of these, I don't think, I've heard anyone, I don't, I don't think there's anything here that at least one person has not expressed interest in.
Yeah.
So if, if we get to a point where we have three people or one person, then I'll send out another message and say, this is what I've got so far, this is where we still need somebody, and then we'll go from there, with the goal being that we have at least two people lined up for each one by, by the June meeting.
And, um, so I looked at, the April and May meetings were mid, for like mid-month for IGAF, but they were both different, one was second, one was third month, so I think it varies. The June isn't on the calendar yet.
Okay.
Uh, but it will probably be before our meeting, so I'll just shoot everyone an email when it comes in. Unless Suzanne, you wanna just attend now, and it's the last one, I don't know, have, do you wanna attend it as your last, or do you wanna?
If I can, when, when do, do we know?
We don't have a date yet, it's gonna be like.
If I can, I'll, I'll do some overlap, you know.
I mean, I think it's also maybe a good idea if someone is expressing interest. Cause like a lot of times the first month is a lot of like, maybe IGAF members? Like, I remember that last time, like Nancy was on it, and then she was like, I don't know if I'm officially on it. Cause it took them a few months to actually declare who was nominated for each committee from two ninety-seven, so I think that's okay, is what I'm saying, like, if more people show up to the June, not more, we're supposed to have two, but if someone else shows up, it should be okay before they're actually nominated.
Right, and then we'll just, you know, I'll, I'll plan to go if I can, once we find out the date, and then if somebody else wants to.
Yeah.
I'll pick it back up, whatever works.
I do have notes that the next CAG meeting is June eleventh at AVN. And the next Friends meeting is June sixteen, I'm excited.
Look at it, it sounds like one.
Those are probably higher than you. Christina, do you have any idea on the Collaboration for Early Childhood?
Um, they meet monthly, but, uh, I could find out.
Okay.
Yeah, I can make that soon.
Out with Purpose is just varies.
Yes, for right now, yeah.
Um, well, they do have, yeah, would make it, we would have to find out what would be the best way to like formalize it.
Gotcha.
Because like I said, it's not been formal. And I don't know whether they would want somebody, yeah.
Are you gonna ask them?
I can.
That would be.
Cause then they decide that they want people from other companies to. And others definitely interested in the library, you know, particularly now.
Yeah. Okay, so taking that to June. Formation of committees. This is simply a discussion item. Um, this is around, sort of just introducing the idea that we have not in the past had a large number of committees or subcommittees of the board, but thinking about, is that something that we would like to look at? Is that something that we would like to do moving forward? Are there specific initiatives or specific topics that we feel we want to have a small group of people dedicated to on a regular basis? So sort of covering this along with the other committees, thinking about what are the responsibilities that we want to have individually? Or as a group, is there something that like, all, all seven of us cannot all sit down and figure something out? But can there be a smaller group of folks who handle something specific and then report back to the board? So there's not a lot of, I'll say scaffolding around this. This is more just for us to discuss for a few minutes. Do we have ideas around committees that we would like to see? Do we want to go back and research the kinds of committees that we think would be useful in the next two years? Or do we all just wanna know it's an option in our back pocket and we don't need to do anything with it now? So do we have any ideas around committees that folks are interested in us having on a regular basis or as a standing committee?
Would you wanna say something? Um, I think one committee that we could consider is a transition committee to support elsewhere in, in the first year of the role, if it's of interest and it would be useful. This is a, it's something that I've seen other library boards use, um, to support transitions, and, um, it could be a useful tool and it could be flexible and, you know, just geared towards support. And sort of extra relationship building, liaison, communication during that sort of transitionary period. So that's an idea, it's some, it's an idea that I've taken, that I've observed elsewhere, um, that, you know, other library boards have used successfully. So I'd throw that out on the table as an idea. I'd also really love to hear about committees in the past that haven't been useful, like you just mentioned. That would be really, I would love to hear those that we've been on board, talk a little bit about all their past committees as examples.
I think other than search committees and the naming committees, we've been.
Committeeless?
Well, especially, I mean, like ad hoc kind of committees, where it's like, when we were talking about the calendars, Christina and I met with an A D to like, you know, talk through some of how we might be looking at the, um, the calendars and holidays. So then we could come back to the board, and we came back to the board and kind of reported on what we had talked about, just to make it.
It was, it was a single issue, like, all seven people are not going to sit down and get all of this hashed out. We designated, these folks are gonna go, they're gonna figure it out, they're gonna come back to the board, and then we can all be informed without. Try, trying to get everybody in the room together, but I, hey, can I think of? Yeah.
There really is, oh, well, Christina and Matt met about the, um.
Yeah, we met with Lushlan Ward and Camille Lally, I think, um, about like legislation stuff, but I, yeah, it wasn't a committee, it was just like a.
Well, it's an ad hoc committee, it's just a, you know, a.
But it wasn't even like a formal ad hoc, I mean, we didn't have like a formal meeting posted or anything, it was just.
Oh, no, no, I don't mean like public, I did, yeah.
Right, but when we say.
When we say committee, I think we're, we're taking that as a.
We are talking about.
Yeah.
And so I, I think something that we have, well, I wanna stick with the annies first, so you brought up that, and I think you had heard of that through ALE, or was it?
The Library Journal.
The Library Journal.
Yeah.
Can you speak to that?
Um, I didn't really come prepared to speak to it today, cause I thought maybe we would talk about it next month, so I could maybe prepare.
Yeah, I agree.
More, um, comments and have a chance to find out a little bit more about whether that would be something that would be useful, um, right? Cause it's a, it's a liaison, and it would be a two-person committee, not a three-person committee. But that's the format that it, um, was presented to me when I read it. So, and the idea would be really based on the, the needs identified, and particularly by elsewhere, um, about what would be helpful. So it could be, it's, it's flexible in form, it can sort of shape-shift to, to fill the, the needs that are helpful. And I think it also, I was thinking about it a little bit in a sort of dynamic relationship to what kinds of support elsewhere is going to have, um, through the hiring committee, um, and sort of what that looked like. I don't know where that currently stands, so. So it's definitely not something that I wanna like push if it's, you know, not helpful or it doesn't sound, you know, like necessary, you know, and there's maybe no need to consider, but if it sounds like additional layers of support, it could also be something that, um, could be very temporary, like it could just be, you know, a few months or it could be a year is sort of like a standard kind of timeframe, but.
I know we previously talked about a personnel committee as well, that's like more, way more broad, but this, this feels like tangential when we lead into a personnel committee.
I mean, it is a personnel committee, I just was naming it, calling it a transition committee, but, um, yeah, but it was a committee. I would, let me look up the, um, article that I.
While you look that up, do you think we need a board governance committee? Most boards I'm on usually have a, I don't know if we necessarily need it, but for formalizing things, it's usually a common one.
Same one.
Um, it, it's about decorum, it's about the bylaws, it's about, yeah, Megan, you wanna?
I just bylaws, I was thinking, did you do bylaws?
Yeah, we talked about rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we have anything about, like, cause I feel like that's been mentioned before, that they're not, um, so that could be another temporary committee of people who wanna focus on the bylaws represented.
So they would take like the first pass of the bylaws, then bring the revised versions to the full board for a vote?
Yeah, and I don't know when, when or if, if we think that's temporary and when we wanna get that.
Well, so with that governance, would that also, cause like something I was thinking, that has come up, I think, previously was, um, policy review, like knowing what policies should be, cause like the bylaws haven't been updated since twenty eighteen, and there are things that we like do differently, but we just, it isn't really reflected. Like even the appointments, I, I, we generally have kept them for two years, and it only says one here on the bylaw. So things like that, um, but then like other policies too, like, I think the staff is really good at telling us what policies need review from a staff perspective of like, you know, our technology or wifi needs to be looked at, but like, as a board, the policies that really inform us, like our bylaws, like other, um, that, I think that could be really helpful.
Yeah, I feel like we should, and feel like I'm overwhelming with like adding a bunch of things, but I feel like that's a good committee to have.
Mm-hmm.
So are you mentioning like a governance committee would be an ongoing thing, uh, by, there would be a bylaws committee that would be an ad hoc thing? Or that would be the same?
Yeah, they would be the same thing.
The same, yeah.
Yeah, and that committee could decide if they wanna keep going or if it, is it just to update these, um, seven-year bylaws? Seven-year bylaws?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I feel like there needs to be a combination of old and, and new board members. Now, you know what I mean? A and B, like, we call it that, you know, it's like when you started. And sorry, just one more, do you think we need a finance committee?
I don't know, finance chair.
So like this, um, yeah, fina- uh, financial, it's not, so, but no, I, um, that's something else I'm used to in the board, and I know we have a lot of capital improvements to do to the building within the next two to three years, so it might be cool to have the, not cool, it might be worth having a team.
Yeah.
Uh, working on that, so.
And it was, previously, most of that lived directly with.
Finance.
The finance officer. That being said, I feel like there, there are more financial pieces we talk about now as a board than there were like five years ago, like, looking at diversifying our income, looking at the taxes being late, looking at our budget, breaking down the budget so it's all digestible to the rest of us and doesn't take seventy-two hours for us to all review as well, so.
Yeah.
I'll say that when I, um, when I started on the board, when I was first appointed before running, um, David like had those of us who were brand new come to a couple of board meetings, a couple of meetings with, um, Mudderyman and I met, with, um, with David and with, um, the running person at the time, who's made us a state meeting. For a couple of meetings to kind of get up to speed, so, but then when the whole board got together and we were reviewing, and that was really helpful, so maybe that's something that could, you know, be.
Yeah.
Where there's a finance committee and the E D, um, and the finance person kind of work together to onboard, um, the board members.
Yeah.
To get ready for the, you know, the, the budget season.
Yeah, I feel like a three-person team, like, with the finance officer.
And I mean, you know, staff does an amazing job of, of, we have it broken down, and it's done over a number of times, and it's very organized. But it is extra helpful to have that little boost at the beginning of kind of, you know, you're brand new, you're getting on, you know, you're just getting your sea legs, and then bam, it's, you know.
Budget season.
Budget season, and we're looking at like pages and pages in the document. That was, that was really helpful.
Yeah.
So I think that would be a piece of that. And again, to Ellsworth's point, also not wanting to make the barriers to people participating in the board too, too much. But these are all great ideas. Um, it's a little, you know, some of the stuff is a little different than other boards that you've been on because of the divide of the roles and what staff does and what the board does are different than like in a nonprofit or even a corporation, you know, so. And Ellsworth as well, first and that, has done presentations on it, so I look forward to hearing contributions about how that breaks down.
And so, some of these ideas is, if you wanna have a more exploratory conversation around, um, what would the finance committee do? And does it make more sense to do just some presentation, right? If the financial processes and things like that, I think that, um, we're absolutely open to that, and as I learn more about the operations of the library, this is a great time to talk about that. Because if there are changes in that, those processes, this is a good time to do it. And again, you know, there's some shared learning opportunities there that, that could inform the most logical on their stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
So we've got.
The library will be closing in thirty minutes.
The library will be closing in thirty minutes.
Transition slash personnel committee, a governance committee, and a finance committee. Would you all like these to be action items, as far as a yes or a no, and assigning folks in June? Do we wanna tackle this sort of the same way, same time we're doing the, like, IGOV and COG? Or do we wanna put it down as a discussion item for June and walk through and discuss the individual committees and what they would do before we decide?
I like the last one.
I know.
People get assigned to explain each committee in a little paragraph or something, and work with Ellsworth on that, you know? I like chatting with you, you know, about, does it make sense to have a finance committee, or is it structured differently? Is it about the capital improvements, is it more specific? And see if they could change that, so the whole committee is.
Annie, can you do the transition slash personnel?
So you're asking for us, in our meeting, to, you know, let there come in a year to, those are goals, okay?
Yeah, how, how you think it should be used, what you think it should be comprised of, do we feel like we wanna have, um, staff involvement until what extent, or who from the staff? And just how, how we think we would use it, how often you think it would be super general? Um, Megan, do you wanna take the governance?
Sure.
And finance chair will get voluntuals to do finance committee.
Yes, I committed myself.
Uh, right, board, training, and before I discuss anything, I'm going to ask Lee and Ellsworth if they have any opinions or resources on board training that you all could or would provide or suggest for us, potentially, alongside the strategic planning session, so traditionally, each summer, there's a Saturday where we just all come hunker down, figure out the strategies. Um, do we want training to be a part of that meeting beforehand? We all do training and then come and discuss, or we select a training and we have a training plan for ourselves from that strategic point, so. If there are resources that you think lend themselves to one or the other option, or if it doesn't need to have anything to do with the strategic planning session at all, um, I think that would be wonderful for us to hear from you all, what you think we should have. And then I think Christina and Suzanne, did you already have some training options that we had?
Yes, I, um, I just reached out to Dotland, Ted Roche, of Race Conscious Dialogues. Um, so Race Conscious Dialogues is, is an organization that started in Oak Park in, um, the wake of the twenty sixteen election, um, and has been building and growing, and started out as just white affinity groups, um, and has expanded to now there's also bi-hog affinity groups. Um, and was wanting to find out, and staff in the past, when we did that, everybody out of years, many years past, staff I think was given the option to sign up on their own, and that will be reversed, was that how that was set up?
I can't remember.
I think that's, I think that's how that, that was done, um, and I reached out to her to talk to her about what are our options here as a board? Because we can only have two board members in any one group, um, and what kind of is happening? She's putting together some materials for something, and we wanted to kind of customize something through them, and I don't know if then if we'd do that, that we would wanna put an RFP out, then to get other firms to get some input. But in terms of if we wanted to just have where board members and/or staff could participate, um, the Race Conscious Dialogues Annual Conference will be August second and third, um, and they're hoping to have, um, it looks like they're gonna have a one white affinity group cohort and one bi-hog affinity group cohort. Um, and again, you know, if, if they can get more people to co-facilitate, it's all volunteer-run organization, I use to co-facilitate, then they could have more, um, but there's the, you know, the challenge in terms of how many people would be in any one cohort. Then the fall dates are Sundays, um, they're gonna do kind of intensive, um, Sundays, two to five, to, um, to concentrated, and that's October nineteenth and twenty-sixth, and November second and ninth.
Two, but that's two separate, like, sorry, if each?
It's four, and four sessions is one cohort.
Okay.
The August second and third will be, actually, I said that backwards, August second and third is more concentrated, because it will be in two days instead of four. Um, and will be longer days, um, I don't know that I got the hours from her. Um, and then for that, people could just sign up voluntarily, um, and there's a sliding scale from zero to two hundred and fifty to participate then, cause they don't want to have any barriers that people can't participate. Um, I went through RCD, and then I co-facilitated it, and Christina used to do participated it, um, every single time I co-facilitated, I learned something, it's not a one and done, it's not a five and done, it's, you know, it's like, it's an ongoing, always learning, and, um, I think would be really, it could be really valuable. So those are the kind of, um, just tapping into what they're already doing options, I wanted to get those dates from her. And then they, they do also do training where there would be something customized for us, and there would be a fee involved, it would be more than that. And again, I don't know if it's something for the board, if we need to do an RFP, um, so she's working on getting something together, kind of, to give us an idea of what that might be, but let me, you know, if we need to, to put that out there for other organizations, that's an option. But I think that the way that staff did it before was really helpful, I mean, I heard from people who on staff who did it before I was a trustee, and really appreciated it. It's a, you know, and it's not even, like, calling it training isn't quite right, because it's more than, you know, it's a, it's a participatory engagement, you know, where you, everybody learns from everybody, um, and you learn about yourself, and learn in the process. I mean, I would always, I would be happy to do any of this, again, you know, every time you engage with us, there's, there's something new. When we did the, um, the search committee, you know, you all did it as well, or not you all, but, that, uh, they had a particular area that was talking about, um, anti-bias training with respect to, um, doing a search. And there were new ways of looking at bias that were specific to that, that I'd never heard of. So I think it'd be something that, that, that could be really valuable, and find out what other options there are.
Is there a way where we can do training together, cause like we can do a retreat together?
The, well, if. Yeah, it would be open meetings, so we'd be able to record it in public.
So you can't, you can't do it open meeting, cause if people need to be vulnerable.
Exactly. Ideally, yeah.
I think that's why, like, you're bringing up maybe the, like, you get a ticket to go, and then maybe we all come back and share, is that what you're kinda suggesting?
But even that.
No, if it's in a big, if it's in a big group and we're separated away, no, it's.
So.
It's not a big one.
As I say, I don't think they get to be very big groups.
Like, between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-two, maybe, there were a lot of cohorts that were going on all the time, and then they, they, and even then, not looking at OMA or, you know, any of that, there was an effort to try and make sure that people were kind of, like, when my wife and I did it, we were in separate groups, you know, so you're like, I'm gonna open up and, and be more vocal, um, but they just don't have that, and cohorts weren't right now, there's not, sadly, not a lot of interest from white people right now, which is kind of shocking to me, um, and tragic, but, um, the interest has waned since the same day, um, but, so in terms of having enough people to kind of run cohorts. But people kind of being separated more, and then Michael and Ted talking about us doing it together, even if we could, as far as OMA, then there's like, it's, it's kind of a different, that's where I'm saying that would be something that they would customize.
Yeah.
More because it's a different approach.
Yeah, I think that would be vulnerable, that, just here we are, we need to be able to do it here.
Right?
Cause I feel like we should get training on how we talk about race as a tool, because if we can't do it.
Yeah.
Right?
If you don't talk about library business, then it's on you, but that's very difficult to do, and it would be in the, I think, in the gray area.
I, I, I feel like that would limit how we could authentically interact.
Yes.
Um, we would need to do more RFP and more broadly, correct?
I know, it's for staff.
Ellsworth, does the people get something?
I think, I think depending on the scale, like the cost and the scale of the training, that would impact the requirement for an RFP or not. One benefit of doing an RFP in this kind of situation is being able to put in that with yours pubs, we wanna hear how you would manage a board of this size, um, with these requirements for open meetings, and see what ideas came back. Because there are my recent facilitators who are like, oh, I have an answer for this.
Right.
Another piece that we could think about is, this is an area where, um, I've, I've heard staff asking for more training as well. So expanding the group a little bit, depending on the scope and what this group is imagining, might allow us to do more robust sort of breakouts, mix in staff and trustees, which could answer the question of, it doesn't have to be an open meeting, there would just be more choices. That may not fit the scope of what you're imagining as a trustee experience, um, but I think that those are questions that, that facilitators might have a really.
Right, yeah, and that's, you know, I just wanted to get it started, because I think it's, it's so critical, um, and, yeah, the idea was that it would be definitely something open to staff too, and that is something even knowing these dates of when they're doing it, that can be something that is, you know, that you all decide if you want to, you know, have that open up to staff in that same way that was done before, you know, even as an interim, you know, um.
And I think as far as sort of the test case of figuring out how we can do this kind of training, this topic would be a really good starting point, because I think, again, it's something that probably drew all of us to this organization, and it's still embedded in our strategic design much that, it, it feels like, um, that's still really a way, a path to, to getting everyone going.
What would be our steps? What do we do?
I think our next steps would be, probably getting help from the staff, putting together, uh, if not from RFP at least, beginnings of what questions need to go out, and then maybe checking with staff to see, other than Race Conscious Dialogues, do they already know of other folks who would offer this? And I can't imagine the answer being no, but if the answer is no, then us finding some other options.
Cause there are, there are times that people are doing that, and I love those, not just dialogue, I do it myself, but like for our needs, you know, on the.
Uh, last item on the agenda is the strategic planning session, this is less than, oh, sorry?
Just background of board training, do all the new board members have the information about OMA and FOIA online training?
No.
Did you guys receive those yet? I think they just got their email address today, so, like, like fifteen minutes ago, right, so.
I'm just like, wanna make sure they know that that exists.
I think they have an email that's probably waiting in their inbox.
Okay, awesome, nice.
Maybe not.
But yeah, it's on the state website.
Okay.
What is it, it's just FOIA, is there a SCOTFLAW, or?
It's training.
It's just training.
It's just FOIA, yeah. Do we have SCOTFLAW? No, we don't have that. No, we're on a, we're elected, so that it's like, when do you, you can't owe money to the library, that would be a little.
It's really hard to owe money to.
That's what I was gonna say, that would be funny.
I gotta go, like, like, I was like, my word I gotta bell, but, but I mean, it's okay.
Yeah, I, but I got my words, so. I said, I owe.
When the bylaws are, are reviewed, I think that thinking about adding a section on board orientation might make a lot of sense, that we could hear some of these pieces, and it might, it might just create some worlds for, for what that looks like, um, and there are a lot of different models for that, and we also might look at them, and this group decides that's not the direction, but I think it makes sense in the context of that conversation to think about what, yeah.
One hundred percent.
I think.
If a number of us joined in COVID times, like that and zero, like not even the OMA and.
Yeah, a lot of things too.
Websites were down when I started, so it was just like, you know, other than the, the budget that was handled so beautifully, everything else was just like, um, so, yeah, orientation was key.
Oh my goodness, I almost wrote FLLA, acronym, OMA and FOIA. Too much alphabet, sweet, okay. And then I think there is, well, not I think, there is also AILY training that we are all eligible for, at least the trustee ones.
Um, I love, and who else?
Yeah, they will have.
So check if you have, you're logged in for any of those things.
Well, yeah, I think we can do, we can do the rail's one, we can do that ourselves, right, with our email.
Now that we have our email.
And they have some that are like self-paced, um, stuff. I also, just to let all the new folks know, like, there's a lot that's going to spam, so I would just check your spam folder once in a while, cause a lot of the, your Gmail accounts were getting flagged for me, so I did go in there.
Yeah, there's a good amount of stuff in here.
We do get a lot of junk mail too, but sometimes it's not junk.
We do get a lot of junk mail, which makes it challenging to make sure you don't miss the important stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, that reminds me that earlier when we had, um, public comment on, it was, you know, surprising, it's like being on the receiving end of public comment and not responding, and that's, you know, a hard thing, and we had, we, we did rewrite, um, statements about public comment, and I think we had talked about reading that at the beginning of every meeting, um, so that people who are coming with public comment don't expect us to respond.
Yeah.
And it's.
We did say we would do that, that's.
Yeah, it's a hard.
It's your first time.
That's on me.
Yeah, good. Um, yeah, but, you know, that, to let people know that they don't feel like they're unheard, you know, and to make sure that we like make eye contact, and that we like, you know, really listen when people come, because if people take the time out of their day to, you know, to come and then don't feel hurt. I went to village hall a number of times when there were, you know, high school students, you know, people really felt like they were unheard, um, and it was just heartbreaking. So, um, but we generally do not respond in the moment, um, that's just not.
I think there's already something on the, I think there's something on the sign-in sheet, and there's something on the web forum that just says, if it's not already a part of the agenda, that it's not something that the trustees will likely discuss, um.
Unless it's theatrical.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was the court.
Which I think we did respond, did we plan? That was a response.
And when children.
Make sure we tell them.
The bylaws are the more points. I was gonna say, I think kids are exempt.
We don't have a lot of kids, you know, cause that was.
That was pretty.
You gotta make them feel good, um.
Um, the last item, uh, strategic planning session, um, so traditionally, the strategic planning session is a Saturday or Sunday in. So traditionally, the strategic planning session is a Saturday or Sunday in summer, where we will sit down with leadership, the executive director, whoever Ellsworth decides should be in on that meeting with the board, and we will discuss overall strategy. What are our priorities? What needs to be at the top of the pile? What do we think might have to go by the, the side while we look at other things? And then start to prioritize things that we go along with these committees. So, you know, do, you know, what, what policies do we think as a board need to be addressed first, or what bylaws do we think need to be addressed first? What do we think the finance committee should tackle first? Basically, getting everyone together, giving everyone the marching orders for the majority of the next year, so that the staff and leadership understand what our strategic vision is, we understand what our place is in that, and we understand where all the moving pieces are, so that when we are coming back only every four weeks, everyone isn't lost. We kind of have a roadmap that we built out before that we're following along with. It's usually, what was it, like, five, six hours? It was a good long time.
Nine to one of the last, August 20, 2023.
Okay, so again, it's usually over summer because everybody's kind of low and low. Some of the other boards or groups aren't meeting, so we have a little bit more leeway to sort of make some of these decisions. So I would just ask that everyone sort of take a gander at your calendar through June, July, August, and see, are there no-go weekends? I think that might be easier to find the weekends that are, that are those.
In July, I've got a lot of those. I was done here.
And also, could we like possibly secure a facilitator for that? Because I think last time it was a little bit, everyone showed up without a lot of direction. And I ended up taking them and like got a marker and chart paper, but I would rather, like, I'm happy to play that role, but then I want to know I'm not playing that role. But I think it would be really nice if it was a staff person or external, so.
And the, the nice thing, though, it did start off bumpy because we did not have that direction. But the nice thing about it was that it did end up being collaborative among, we had all, the full leadership team there. Then again, that's your, you know, your decision about how you want to proceed, but I thought that was a highlight, was when we were, when we were writing things on the board and when we were discussing about what we agree.
I think aside from finding a date, maybe we come up with what we want on the agenda and then let you all see that, if there's anything we've missed, have you add that to the agenda, and then from there we can come up with our attendees list, and then somebody will get, volunteer distribute to handle the whiteboard or.
I think it's more than handling the whiteboard. I think it's like framing, like, it's, it's asking the right questions. It's, it's.
I think if we have an agenda that will help though. We did not really last year.
Yeah, that's true.
Which is kind of.
The facilitators is a new.
Oh, yeah, the facilitators are lost.
People are really trained in this specifically too, as like a, a facilitation method. So I don't know, if we have the funds, it's not usually that much for one person for one day. We're usually talking us $1,000, but I don't know, it could be nice.
I think it'd be helpful. I think it'd be productive.
Yeah, and then it's like a neutral person too.
Exactly.
So it helps.
Also not, not staff.
Well, if we go the third-party route, yeah. It's pretty, it, it, yeah.
I think it might always be the stress of somebody at the table trying to do that all as well.
And we've got so much like shuffling and, and we have such a, like, new board, new ED, and so I think it could be nice to, yeah.
I agree, because it was, like I said, it was amazing how both board and leadership team, you know, kind of came in and came together and it was very lively and just wonderful. I left there feeling really great. Unfortunately, that was the day that we got the bomb threat, so at the end of the day, let's just kid, you know. But the, the strategic planning meeting was really great, and that was, you know, with Christina stepping in on that one. So if we have.
And I think from that meeting too, like, there was a disconnect on what I think a lot of us left with that day.
Yes.
And then with what ended from, like, translated from that day, and a facilitator would help.
Absolutely.
Communicate what was talked about on that day, I think.
Make sure it's aligned.
Yeah.
To avoid that misalignment and it being a third, a, a, a neutral third party.
Right.
I think, yeah, 100%.
Okay, so for a strategic planning session, let's say for now until the June meeting, board, please look at your calendars and see what your availability is for a weekend.
Should we do a doodle poll?
In summer.
Yeah.
So a doodle?
Do we? I don't, I don't have the keys to the doodle poll. Okay.
It's gonna be a weekend or a weekday.
A weekend.
I think it was Sunday last time, right?
One, one day.
One day.
Right, yeah.
My bestie Ellsworth over here says that we can do a doodle poll, so. We'll work on that.
Do you want us to include some Saturdays as well, or do you want the Sunday to be the best?
I think Saturdays or Sundays are fun, I guess.
Yeah.
We can do a.
The more options we have, and then we will, we'll narrow from there. So we will do the doodle poll and then think about items that you would like to have on the agenda. I think that will probably take much, much longer, probably won't be something that we get finished in the June meeting, but hopefully we can have it done by the, depending on what day we're gonna do this, the following meeting, so that the staff can have a look at it. And we can do, we can, we can figure out who from staff needs slash wants to be there for the strategic session, and we'll all know what we're talking about. Do we have any items that I have missed? Or anything that anyone would like me to add to next month's agenda, potentially?
Not more than me than what we already have.
I will work on getting some notes together on the things that we talked about and getting them to Ellsworth and Lee to sort of fill in the blanks. Primarily, taking a look at the trustee calendar related to participation for friends and donations, and potentially looking at something with the Village for Juneteenth. Then taking a look at the additional reports, hearing back from everybody where they would like to participate. We'll add to that the formation of committees, and we have assignments out to folks who are gonna come back with a synopsis of what they think that would look like. For training, can you get more information on what Race Conscious Dialogue would offer so that we can give that to Lee and Ellsworth to sort of build the potential RFP offer? And.
Are we looking at other places too?
Yes.
The RFP, yeah.
And then I will try to, Susannah and Christina, if you guys can help me with all of the places with all of the training, if we could just make a cohesive list for everybody. Right now I have Rails, ILA, and then there should be some OMA and FOIA information, but if you haven't already gotten it, we can find those links for everybody. And then the strategic planning session, everyone check your calendars, start thinking about what we want to put on the agenda as far as high levels, right, high, high levels to have to.
One thing to the agenda next time is to kind of go over the, the officer roles and then ideas that we might have, because we wanted to wait until everybody can get that subtle ideas of, of how that might shift a bit, and that will also play into the bylaw rewrite and all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to wait until we have that committee and then have that committee discuss those things, or do we feel like we need to discuss them before? I, I feel like if we're going to have a committee to do that, then.
To do the bylaws?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I was, oh, and also the.
Then we say.
We can make a committee.
Okay. I, I feel like if we're gonna make a committee, let's not do that.
I'm just thinking, like, for Colin and Mika, they need to know what, what they just signed up for. So like.
You guys didn't hear the two sentences.
Yeah.
Little thing in there.
But Mika, you don't need to take notes during regular board meetings, but closed session, you will. You need to take, record those notes.
And recording votes too, correct?
For closed session. The staff keeps track of who does what votes, but the secretary needs to, when there is a, a roll call vote, like go through every name.
Tell them we're all labeled.
What?
I said we're all labeled, because I know how many times have we all tried to go around this table and we forget.
Here's the thing, here's my trick to you, because we all know each other by our first name, but in roll call votes and in calling attendance, we do last names, oh, no, on your phone, in alphabetical order. And the president goes last, always on any, like, in attendance and, and all of that. And then budget season starts then for Colin to.
Um, I guess that really depends on staff. I was gonna say, we usually get the first one, like, at the July-ish meeting.
I think August.
The August meeting.
But staff start in June.
So staff start in June, so then Colin will be meeting the staff in June.
Well, I, this, I also work for you, Colin.
So y'all are, okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have that whole onboarding for, but I want to make sure y'all have some sense of, of some of the outlines of where we're at with starting with in terms of responsibilities for that.
Ellsworth, great, anything else?
No, only, only the secretary, the finance officer, and the president for the signers for the bank, but other than that.
And that's the new officers, right?
Yes.
So I'm done. It's not done signing things.
I feel like.
You sign a lot of stuff too.
Onward and you keep.
Mika.
Like, don't think it's on the box, that's.
You get to sign a lot of stuff.
I got like a year later.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and so like, like, are, are we able to, to, like, give you something when you first meet you as like, I mean, trustee, did you get anything?
No.
Okay, he made it seem like it was something that was established. He was like, oh, I need to give you this book and I need to.
It's a council.
Yeah, I got.
There was a book?
He did give me a little book, yeah.
It was a Gilmour.
I didn't get a book.
I had to get a tour of the building either. I missed out on a walk, I'm gonna get it.
Yeah, it, it's, we're getting sharper.
They can do a tour of the building.
If anyone wants that.
If you're going to the roof, I want to go too, because I know I gotta see that.
But the bees are gone.
The bees are gone, but I still want to see the roof.
If there's nothing else, having concluded our agenda, we are adjourned.